I think this atomic clock we see on the back wall is thirty seconds slow. Okay, there we go. Good evening, everyone. This meeting of the City Council of Dennison, Texas for Monday, May the nineteenth in beautiful downtown Dennison will come to order. And it's our pleasure tonight to have our, Ronnie, oh yeah, Ronnie's here, okay. The Director of our Public Works Department, Ronnie Bates, will come and please, but before you come.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have Jacob Nichols come up as Director of St. Luke's Episcopal Church and offer our invocation, please, if you'll stand.
Let us pray. Almighty and everlasting God, we give you thanks for the earth that we inhabit. We see the awe of your creation in the storms that run their courses. We ask your mercy for all who have been devastated or injured by the storms that have come through these and all lands. Fill them with hope and strength, open the hearts of their communities to assist them in their needs, and give us all peace in our day. We pray for this city, Dennison, and for this city council meeting. We ask that your presence would guide the words, thoughts, and actions of our leaders for the life and well-being of this community. Assist us mercifully, Lord, to strengthen our bonds of friendship and give us the resolve to strive forward into a world of true mercy, peace, and empathy. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ronnie Bates, Director of Public Works, if you would offer our Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes, sir. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance, Mr. Perez.
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the D.C., Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thanks, everyone. You're welcome to be seated. And we have three special proclamations to do tonight. And I'm gonna ask those that will be receiving those to join me in just a moment. The first one is Mental Health Awareness Month. The second will be Flood Safety Awareness Week. And the third will be the National Public Works Week proclamation, so. Welcome.
As many of you know, we continue to have a growing population of persons in our county who need additional help, especially those who are much less fortunate than us. So tonight, it's a great honor to offer this proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. And whereas Mental Health Awareness Month is an annual observance followed by Mental Health America, founded by Mental Health America in nineteen forty-nine to highlight the importance of mental well-being, to educate the public, and to reduce the stigma and promote support for those affected by mental health conditions. And whereas, mental health impacts individuals, families, and communities across Dennison, Texas. One in five U.S. adults experience mental illness each year. And one in six U.S. youth have a mental condition, but only half of those receive treatment. Fifty percent of all lifetime mental illness begins by age fourteen and seventy-five percent by age twenty-four. Early intervention and access to quality care are crucial for managing mental health conditions and improving quality of life. And whereas, despite progress in mental health initiatives, more than thirty million people in the United States still lack access to comprehensive, high-quality care. Despite its prevalence, mental health remains shrouded in stigma, preventing many from seeking the help and the support that they need. And whereas, this year's theme of Turn Awareness Into Action encourages individuals and communities to move beyond understanding mental health issues and to actively engage in efforts to support mental well-being, such as seeking help when needed, supporting others, and advocating for systemic changes to improve public access to mental health. And whereas, each of us can play a role in promoting mental health wellness and reducing the stigma associated with mental health by being compassionate, informed, and supportive of those facing mental health challenges. Mental Health Awareness Month is an opportunity to reaffirm our commitment to building a healthier, more supportive community and to recognize the importance of accessible, high-quality mental health. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowley, Mayor of Dennison, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2025, to be Mental Health Awareness Month. Signed, the nineteenth day of May, 2025. Our next proclamation deals with something we've seen a little bit of lately. It's a proclamation about the city of Dennison and surrounding areas of North Texas. And whereas, the city of Dennison and North Texas are susceptible to severe weather events, including flooding, which can endanger lives, damage property, and disrupt vital infrastructure. And whereas flooding remains one of the most frequent and costly natural disasters. I'm so glad you came up. I'm just reading right away and just getting, I was just feeling so good about reading, so. Anyway, thank you all for stepping up. Whereas flooding remains one of the most frequent and costly national disasters in Texas, and awareness is a critical component of community preparedness and resilience. By educating ourselves about floods and the proper response to them, we can help improve outcomes for our community. Whereas, the residents of Dennison benefit from proactive planning, emergency preparedness, and public education that help mitigate the impact of floods and reduce potential loss. To that end, we must exercise caution in the midst of flooding and must never attempt to cross floodwaters wherever, whatever their depth may be. The turn-around-don't-drown that you hear often, that campaign reminds us of the sobering reality that a mere six inches of moving water can carry away an adult and a large, and large vehicles. Large vehicles require a depth of only two feet. So whereas Flood Awareness Week provides an opportunity to educate the public and the importance of flood safety, encourage responsible development practices, and promote the availability and benefits of flood insurance. And whereas the city of Dennison recognizes the importance of cooperation among city departments, local emergency responders, regional agencies, and citizens in reducing flood risks and enhancing community resilience. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowley, Mayor of the city of Dennison, do hereby proclaim and celebrate May the nineteenth through the twenty-fifth to be Flood Awareness Week. So.
And Mr. Bates, come on back up. This way I won't, this way I won't forget him. And so all the staff that came tonight, please join us up here. And maybe circle, maybe circle around the podium here. Or thank you all for coming. What a great looking group.
Yes, I bet. I bet not everyone's had a bunch of extra sleep, have you? So anyway, we just thank you so much for all you do. So whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facility, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of Dennison. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of our public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are all responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities, facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, in the public interest for the citizens and civic leaders in the city of Dennison to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2025 marks the sixty-fifth Annual National Public Works Week. This year's theme of People, Purpose, and Presence highlights three cornerstone ideals that motivate public works professionals to serve in their communities each and every day. Meeting the needs of the people is what gives public works its sense of purpose. Many times, public works professionals will never meet those whose lives they have impacted because when things are going right, nobody really knows you're there. And yet with, with or without fanfare, public works is ever-present, working in the background to advance quality of life for all. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowley, do hereby proclaim the week of May the eighteenth through the twenty-fourth as National Public Works Week. So let's give these guys and girls a hand.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Agenda Item Number Three, Public Comments. Citizens may speak on action items listed on the agenda. A request to speak card should have been completed in return of the city clerk upon arrival and prior to this point in the council meeting. Citizens are limited to three minutes, otherwise, unless otherwise required by law. Comments relating to the public hearings listed below, if any, will be heard when the specific hearing starts. No cards, Madam Clerk? Okay. There are no cards. The next item on the agenda is Agenda Item Number Four, the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Councilman Redwine, and second by Councilman Thomas Thorn, pardon?
They both start with a T.
Okay, okay. Any other discussion or questions, comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Now we'll move to the item number five, which is public hearings. And I'll invite Ms. York to come forward and tell us about the twenty-five-point-three-five-six acre tract of land located in the William Olden survey. Please, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first item I have for you tonight is a request to rezone approximately twenty-five acres of property located at the southeast corner of South Eisenhower Parkway and South Bannon Avenue from the single-family seven-point-five residential zoning district, as well as a planned development overlay district to accommodate, that did accommodate multifamily, to a planned development overlay district for a patio home development. This is an aerial view of that subject property. The zoning map is a little incorrect where you see that multifamily zoning. That's actually a planned development zoning at the moment. Just a little bit of history. On January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, the city council approved a planned development overlay for that northern, about eleven and a half acres of the subject property to accommodate a multifamily development. At the time, the developer wanted to rezone that northern tract to that multifamily or to allow for multifamily development. It was like a townhome product, if you recall. And they wanted to retain that single-family seven-point-five zoning that you see on the southern portion of that map. But through civil engineering plan review, it was determined by the applicant that the development was not feasible. And so they came back to staff and have submitted an application for a planned development overlay for the entire twenty-five acres with a base zoning of single-family patio home. As you can kind of see on this concept plan, the proposed development provides for two means of access via South Eisenhower Parkway and South Bannon Avenue. Additionally, any internal streets, or excuse me, internal local streets will be designed and constructed in accordance with the City of Dennison construction standards, as well as any applicable standards found within Chapter Twenty-two subdivision regulations. Per the concept plan, the applicant is proposing approximately a hundred and fifty-two single-family homes. They have requested a few deviations from the base zoning district. And all of those deviations or development standards can be found as backup in the agenda. It's Exhibit B development standards. But there are a few that staff feels are significant enough to bring up to council. One of those, actually two of those are related to lot size. One is they are requesting a deviation from the base zoning to allow for a four-thousand-square-foot lot, as well as a lot depth, a minimum lot depth of ninety feet. For patio homes, that's pretty typical. Anybody that wants to purchase a patio home is looking for a smaller lot type. Our regular ordinance requires that that lot be five thousand square feet, lot depth of a hundred. A few other deviations are related to parking. The applicant is proposing within the development standards to deviate from the minimum parking requirements by way of a one-car garage and a one-car additional parking space in the driveway. The base zoning district requires for a two-car garage and two additional parking spaces in the driveway. Additionally, they are requesting that the garage be entered from the front of the house rather than by an alley. The base zoning district does require that all garage entries be via an alley. They are also deviating or requesting to deviate from the required visitor parking. One thing that staff did want to make council aware of, this isn't technically a deviation, but it is a development standard that we want council to be aware of, is the applicant is requesting that the garage placement be located at the front of the house, as I mentioned, but have that garage extend past the main dwelling portion. The reason why I'm bringing this up is because we had a joint workshop between city council, Planning and Zoning Commission, city leadership, as well as staff, to kind of discuss residential development standards back in twenty twenty-two. And I believe some of you were a part of that workshop. And from that workshop, a development standard was established that required that any garages that are located in the front yard or in front of the, yeah, in the front yard, excuse me, at the front of the house shall not extend past the main dwelling portion of the house. This PD, the way that it is written, would deviate from that requirement. And the base zoning district for patio homes doesn't explicitly establish this standard like our other single-family zoning districts do because it's entered from the alley by way of the base zoning district. So something that we wanted you guys to be aware of. And the applicant, this may be a little bit easier to understand what I just said. The applicant has proposed that a minimum of five housing elevation styles be required for the development and that the same architectural elevation shall not be used more than three homes on consecutive lots. While the applicant has provided these examples of the proposed elevations, there are no architectural standards listed within the development standards, Exhibit B, the development standards. And so kind of, just to go back to the point I was trying to make, the, all of these proposed elevations, the garage extends past the main portion, or past the main dwelling portion. So if you were in a typical single-family zoning district, that would not be allowed. If I can go back to this, I'm sorry. Per this, per the concept plan, the applicant is dedicating approximately two acres of open space. Through the review process, staff did ask that additional open space be dedicated. That was not provided in any of the revisions. But it was something that the Planning and Zoning Commission did request as a condition. As well as at the meeting that we had with the Planning and Zoning Commission on May thirteenth, in addition to the open space, or additional open space request, they did have significant concerns about the parking. As I mentioned, the applicant is requesting to deviate from the two-car, two additional parking spaces in the drive to a one-car, one additional space in the drive. The commission recommended that city council consider requiring the entire development to retain the two-car garage and two additional parking spaces in the driveway established by the base zoning district. They had significant concerns, especially since the applicant is also requesting to deviate from the visitor parking. They were concerned about cars being parked in the street and what kind of traffic issues that would come from that, as well as additional, or the lack of additional parking and having vehicles parking over the required sidewalks. And then as I mentioned, there are, there is a minimum of two acres established by this planned development for open space. Staff did recommend additional open space, and that was not provided within any of the revisions. However, the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended additional open space, especially along that southern portion, to hopefully break up the monotonous line of homes that are established via this concept plan. The future land use plan does designate this area to be developed in a neighborhood manner. This request, this rezone request does comply with the future land use plan. As I mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval with the additional, or with the conditions that you see there. And that is also established in the recommended motion. Staff is present for any questions that you may have, and the applicant is here as well.
All right. Any questions of Ms. York?
So really quick, so from what I understand, a patio home, it are, it is multiple homes that are, that share a wall. Is that correct? The definition of a patio home?
Not necessarily via our zoning ordinance. There is allowance for a zero lot line on one side for a side yard, or zero setback, zero foot setback on one side of the lot. However, there's a requirement for the lot that's adjacent to it to have a ten-foot side yard setback. So they're not necessarily connected like a townhome.
Okay. So there'll be about ten feet of space in between these homes?
On at least one side, yes, sir. Oh, yeah, on each side, yes, sir.
Do we know the dimensions, the average dimensions of the homes that are gonna be put on these lots?
No, sir, I don't. The minimum square footage established by the base zoning district for those dwellings is six hundred and fifty square feet.
If it's a forty-foot lot and they got a ten-foot space, you got a thirty-foot line.
What's the setback from the street?
They are requesting that it be twenty feet. Established by the ordinance, I honestly can't remember. But I will say for all other single-family residential zoning districts, we have an allowance for twenty feet for the main front portion of the house, but that garage is setback twenty-five feet.
Right.
Is there an HOA or amenities listed in the PD?
There, outside of the open space, there are no additional amenities established, but there will be an HOA to maintain any drainage ways in open space areas.
Age-restricted or low-income status on these?
That has not been discussed, no, sir.
I've slept since we initially approved this area, but I thought it was, and I could be wrong, a retirement. I thought it was initially for a retirement community, but I could be wrong on that.
I don't believe, I mean, maybe that wasn't discussed with staff. It was more of like a townhome. They kind of encircled each other and all the parking was interior to those kind of townhome products.
So what would be the width of the street?
It would be a regular local street. It's a fifty-foot right-of-way, thirty-one back-to-back from, I'm sorry, thirty-one back-to-back? Yeah. Fifty-foot right-of-way.
So you've got two cars on each side parked in the street? Not much room for responders?
That was one of the concerns during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, especially with the reduction in visitor parking as well as onsite parking. And that was one of the concerns that was brought up as well.
Yeah, would the HOA restrict parking in the street? You know, since, you know, we're getting rid of visitor parking on the lots.
I assume they could, but I don't know. Well, it's a public street, so probably not.
Right. Well, I know if HOAs that will send you a nasty letter if you park in the street too long, so.
Yeah, anywhere where there's a public right-of-way, though, the city would be the enforcer of any rules.
So if we narrow it to a single-car garage, we've got a twenty-foot setback. That means at most, one vehicle in the driveway, one in the garage. My truck wouldn't fit in a driveway twenty-foot setback. And if we got a thirty-foot lot outside of the concrete, then we got one vehicle on the front, possibly. It's gonna be hard to do for any normal-sized family.
Yes, sir.
Did the plans include sidewalks?
Sidewalks are required.
Are required, okay.
Yes, sir, by the subdivision ordinance.
So in your example, your truck would block the sidewalk?
Sir, yes, sir.
It seems super congested to me.
Yeah. Did you say the developer's here?
The applicant is here, yes, sir.
At this time, we'd like to open the public hearing and we'd invite the developer to come forward and visit if you'd like to. Please state your name and address for the record, kind sir.
Good evening, council members, city staff. My name is Brendan Ochoa with Southland Consulting Engineers. Address is ten-two-ten North Central Expressway, Dallas, Texas, seven-five-two-three-one. It's my pleasure to represent my client in the proposal Parkway Bend Plan Development. We envision and acknowledge the attraction and strength of the city of Dennison as a desirable place to live. We appreciate the opportunity to work with city planning and engineering departments to provide this case before you. I look forward to answering any questions that you may have tonight.
Thank you. I believe our staff mentioned that there were several items that were deviations from our normal ordinance. The square footage of the lot going from five thousand down to four thousand. A one-car garage instead of a two-car garage. Minimum parking, I think, is deviated. And I think we, I believe we have a requirement of alley entrance or the rear of the property instead of the front of the property. And in the width of the street, I'm just very concerned that we, that we're gonna have overcrowding there and not having good flow of traffic to and from. What was the reasoning to not do alley entrances?
The more, just the interested home builder that we're working with. This is the product they sell really well nationally. And so we wanted to make the development complement the product.
Do you have any imagery or mock drawings of examples of where this has been laid out in other areas?
In Dennison or just anywhere?
You said it, does it nationwide, just anywhere else?
Yeah, the, they have some other developments. I believe they're, that's gonna be closer down in Dallas area. I don't know the exact location. The elevations that we're looking at tonight, these are actually the products.
Yeah, those look like two-car, two-car garages.
That's correct. And just for the record, the owner who was here at the PNZ meeting did agree to, just required two-car garages. So there was an agreement that we'd move forward with that as a. So there was an agreement that we'd move forward with that as a condition.
But still front entry?
I'm sorry?
Still front entry?
Front entry, correct, yeah.
With the garage sticking out past the house?
If you narrowed the setbacks, then there's no opportunity to widen the road for first responder use. If you're on the engineering team, I guess, as you guys have looked at the math, and if you had to widen the road to make sure that people parking on the street wouldn't narrow it past a first responder, then you lose a row of housing.
Yeah, as far as the front setback and road width, what we first just wanted to start with was city standard, local residential roadway sections, the 50 and 31. The 20-foot front setback is something I'm just very typical to use, working with in the area. And as far as any concerns about fire access or fire protection, we'll see how we can certainly adhere to or comply with any regulations.
I asked earlier, maybe you can answer your question about the average dimensions of the dwellings?
Yeah, so the 650, you're right, was the minimum allowed? I'm trying to look here. 650 square foot. However, from just the elevations, I'm well anticipating something far greater than that.
And to me, I'm just more just the base dimensions, is it 30 by wide, 30 wide by 20? Or just the dimensions of the?
Yeah, like a 30 by, I don't have the architectural plan. I wasn't provided that, but I know these are upwards of, you know, 1,200 plus, I would assume, just from looking at the pictures.
They're built to spec if people get to choose three elevations in a row, so.
Yeah, five elevations, yeah, we got five elevations.
But if you've got covenants on how repetitive those elevations can be, that tells me that the buyer gets to choose.
Not being able to copy one, you know, several in a row, yeah, they'll have to be.
Do you have an idea of what the price point is for the finished product?
I have no idea, honestly, yeah.
Are these being built to lease or sale?
Sale.
Living in Frisco for 20 years, I saw the patio homes come in, and they looked a lot more like the brownstones in DC and New York. And so, it was an amenity that allowed for the approval of these really narrow lots. What I'm seeing in the elevations here looks nothing like a, something that would attract the kind of buyer that's going to afford the level of house we have to have to afford the taxes that affords the services to provide that family with it. I think our objection in a lot of cases is, is it going to be big enough and pricey enough to support the police and the education that's necessary? Or the pothole repairs? Thank you, guys, by the way.
And I guess, just so I can clarify, will one of the sides of the dwellings be adjacent, directly adjacent and connected with another dwelling?
Our intention was to do five-foot side yards primarily. I think just to provide the flexibility, they could do the zero on one side, 10 on the other. So there's always, you know, a good 10-foot gap between one product to the next.
And that's on both sides?
Yeah, five foot on both sides, correct. Greater on a corner lot.
Other questions?
So did the, breaking it up with the two-acre open space, would that was not considered or?
At the time, yeah, we're, the owners decided not to move forward with guaranteeing further open space. I will say, the preliminary plat is on the order of two and a half acres. It's more than the minimum two acres.
But it's the two and a half acres that's the scraps of the edge of the property that you couldn't do anything with anyway. So I appreciate that, but it doesn't really become a community product at that point. When I was in grade school, I played SimCity, and this is how you stack a neighborhood so that you can maximize the revenue to open roads for the next neighborhood down.
I just have a great deal of concern about the density going to 40-foot lots. I'm just not sure this is the right place for that. I'm very concerned about the streets. We've all driven through neighborhoods where Saturdays or Sundays, you, you, you know, it's, it's hard. You, sometimes you've gotta stop and let the other person come by. And I think that, that's not optimal for us in our community. We'd like to have streets that are easily passable, both ways for all of our citizens. So I think that's a, that to me is a pretty strong negative. Rear entry would have been much more attractive to me than the front entry. And I just think you have a number of deviations from our normal policy that causes me some heartburn. Anyone else, any other questions?
All right, brush our 300 cars going to Eisenhower at the Fan and Light is gonna be a real challenge.
Same thing, I agree with you. I think if the developer wants to get rid of a row of houses, maybe this bottom row, maybe we could reconsider and fill, but it's super congested, and Mayor, I agree with you on that.
You know, I was part of that 2022 committee about the garage, you know, being equal to the house. What I see here, and I just, I wanna make this comment for future developments and everything, what I see here is you have a garage, and then further back, you have the entrance 10 feet, another garage. So when you drive by, you're gonna see garages, you're gonna see garage doors. It's not gonna be something that's gonna beautify, it's gonna do, something that's gonna add value to the, to the city. I also see this in 10 years with the issues of the road, with the design, the congestion. I see this being a, I don't see this being a high-quality neighborhood in 10 years. I'm not saying we have to build, we have to have developments that are large homes, you know, all new developments are like that, but you can have homes that are in the 600 to 1,500 square foot, you know, as these, but that in 10 years still provide a neighborhood that is a high quality. That, that's just, I, I, I don't, you know, I wouldn't wanna drive down a road and just see a bunch of garage doors.
Anyone else? Any other statements?
I think, at this point, I just wanted to also mention that the current zoning does allow for more. There could be a higher yield on the current zoning of units. We're actually looking to decrease the amount of units that was previously planned on the current zoning by about the order of 25%, 20 at 25%. And so, while I can understand the concern about constrained streets and just tunnel vision driving on some of these longer roads, I do think some of the green spaces and some of the blocks will break up the views. And they're actually gonna be looking down towards the open space that has a native tree line as they come down there. It's actually a steep topography, so they'll be coming down, driving towards that open space.
I just think there's a lot of like, yeah, it can't be changed, it can't, there's a lot of this, like, yeah, we're planning on doing this, planning on doing this, but, but what's promised, we're coming and we're approving this. And so, all these things that are possibilities, they, they don't have to happen, right? We're here to approve this. And so, really, I think what happens to happen is just needs to go back to the drawing board with all these things. We need to redesign, have, have the houses following the ordinances that we've placed, do all these things that we've discussed in order for us to come back and approve it. There's just too many, too much, like, we were planning on doing this, we're planning on doing this, but we're seeing this. And we're, if we were to approve this, then we're essentially saying this is good to go and all those other things, we can't say anything about. I just think it needs to go back to the drawing board.
Any other comments, sir?
No more comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We, Mr. Ochoa, thank you for being here tonight on behalf of the developer. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience to speak in favor of or against this proposal? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Back to council, discussion from council.
I'd like to make a motion to to decline an ordinance rezoning the subject property from single-family 7.5, single-family residential district to the single-family 5, single-family residential district to allow for residential uses. We would not approve that.
I second.
So we have a motion by Mayor Protem Adams, a second by Councilman Courtwright. Any other discussion?
No, sir. Hold on, I think that's the wrong item. We're on 5A. Yes, ma'am.
Back up. So I'll take back that motion previously, and then we decline to approve an ordinance rezoning the subject property to plan development overlay district with the base zoning of SP-PH, single-family patio homes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion retracted and a second retracted, and now we have a motion to deny the approval of the ordinance rezoning the subject property to a planned development overlay district. Any other discussion? All in favor to deny the application, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. So the motion is denied. Now, we have 5B, Ms. York, if you could come back and join us, we'd appreciate it. And tell us about 701 East Bullock, please, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Last item I have for you is a request to rezone properly, property, property, good lord, commonly known as 701 East Bullock, from the single-family 7.5 residential district to the single-family SF5 zoning district. And this is an aerial view, as well as the zoning aerial view of the subject property. Property is located at the southeast corner, that is so small, I might have to get glasses, of East Bullock and South 7th? No, Travis, I'm sorry, I don't even have that printed out, but it is located at that corner. As you can kind of tell from the zoning map, there is a sporadic zoning of single-family 7.5 as well as SF5. The property, or the structures located on the north side of East Bullock have been developed to the SF5 standards. And the applicant is requesting this rezone in order to subdivide two legal lots of record, as you can kind of tell from this conceptual plat. Lot 10 and Lot 11, they are wishing to subdivide those two lots into three legal lots of record. They would like to retain that single-family home you see there at the corner of the property. And they do wish to develop those two additional lots, if this is approved, in a single-family manner. The proposed lots do meet the minimum requirements found within the SF5 zoning ordinance. The future land use plan does designate this area to be developed in a neighborhood manner. Staff does recommend approval of the request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval of the request. And I'm present for any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. Any questions of Ms. York? This is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing and invite, is the owner of 701 East Bullock here?
I don't think so.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who desires to speak either in favor of or against rezoning 701 East Bullock? I see none, so the public hearing is now closed. Council, discussion from council. Any discussion? Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance rezoning the subject property from the SF 7.5, single-family residential district to the SF5, single-family residential district to allow for residential uses. I second.
Have a motion by Councilman Thomas, a second by Councilman Redwine. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And the next item on our agenda would be an executive session. However, an executive session is not needed this evening. What we'd like to say is thank you to each of you who have come here to spend the evening with us for our city council meeting, and we appreciate the support. The last comment I would like to make is to the staff of our great city of Dennison. There has been an amazing amount of work done in the last 48, 48 hours. Unbelievable, we've never seen. First of all, we thank the city manager and Mr. Bates for allowing us to do what we've done and bring limbs to the sidewalks and be able to have our city help remove that. But then, number two, it's been amazing to watch our fellow citizens. I've seen them in my neighborhood and all neighborhoods across town, where people wanna help each other. We, when we have a disaster or we have a catastrophe, most people's true hearts come out. And I think that's, that's what our community is made of, of people with big hearts, who wanna help each other and do the right thing. So anyway, thank you, Mr. Bates, thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you to all the staff members. I know you've given way more than eight hours each day. So thank you for all you've done, and we just can't say how much we appreciate everyone. Any other business? If not, the time is now 6:46, and this meeting of the City Council of Dennison for Monday, May the 19th is adjourned. Thank you.